I see. Yes, six oh one. So I hereby call to order the meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Sherry, would you call the roll, please?
Chair Quilisi.
Here.
Vice Chair Nolan.
Here.
Commissioner Lottis.
Here.
Commissioner Swift. And we can't hear you, Swift, you're on mute, but Commissioner Trent is not yet in attendance.
Picture's coming up, yeah.
He's here.
Hi, guys.
Okay, Commissioner Trent calling roll here. Okay, all in attendance, thank you.
All right, pledge of allegiance, Commissioner Trent, would you lead us, please? After you unmute.
Sorry, I didn't hear you, so pledge allegiance?
Yes, please.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stand one nation under God indivisible liberty and justice. Perfect.
Thank you very much. Okay, public communications. The time set aside for the Planning Commission meeting for people to speak from the public on items not on the agenda. Sherry or Lucas, do we have any such persons tonight?
No, not for not on the agenda.
Not on the agenda, okay. Hearing none, then we'll move on to the consent items. The minutes of the special meeting of the Planning Commission, May third and May fifth. Any commissioners have any changes or refinements to those minutes? All right. Hearing none. Could we have a motion for approval? Actually, I think. Sherry, did I send you or Cheryl a couple of things? I noted on May third, for example, it said that I called the special meeting to order and it was actually Commissioner Nolan.
Yeah, we've made that correction.
Right, okay.
So the appropriate motion then would be a motion to approve the minutes along with the amendments as suggested, as as asked by Chair Quilisi. The motion to move the minutes for the special meeting of Planning Commission of May third, two thousand twenty-one and regular meeting of Planning Commission, May fifth, two thousand twenty-one, with the amendments agreed upon by commission.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion, what he said?
So moved.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Well, second.
Very good, thank you. Any discussion? If not, Sherry, would you call the roll, please?
Quilisi?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Lottis?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Swift?
Yes.
Thank you.
Excellent. We move on to tonight's discussion item. And Lucas, I think both you and Nikhil probably have some introduction for us here, so I'll let you choose who goes first.
Well, Nikhil, if it's okay, I'll give a an abbreviated staff report, maybe? Maybe the best way to put it, and Nikhil, I'll let you put the put in some, your two cents worth as well.
Yeah, you go first, Lucas.
Okay. I'll go first, so, good morning, Commissioner, or not good morning. Good evening, Commissioners, my name is Lucas Cybert, Community Development Manager here with the City of Ojai. The item before the commission tonight is a review of the Formula Business Regulations and the Provisions of Section ten dash two point seventeen thirteen, referred to as the Formula Business Establishments. Now, the commission may be asking themselves, or even the community itself that's listening in, why is this before the commission? Well, this actually went before the City Council on April thirteenth of this year as an urgency ordinance, but failed to obtain the necessary supermajority votes that were needed. The matter was alternatively voted to have the commission review the matter further, the matter before it being the Formula Business Establishments Ordinance, and provide a recommendation regarding whether or not modifications to the Formula Business Establishment Code are necessary. Now, for, really for the commission's benefit, I'd like to just kind of give an overview of the Formula Business Ordinance, really kind of what the Formula Business Ordinance is, how kind of staff address it as kind of almost as part of a development standard, if you will, a standard in its own right as new businesses are proposed within the city. So the ordinance itself, the purpose of it is regulating the location and design of new business, which meets the definition of a formula Formula Business Establishment. Any proposed business who applies for a business license is held to the standards of our code, with one of those standards being the Formula Business Establishment portion of our code. There's obviously other development standards that they're held to as well. This is one of those pieces to that puzzle. You know, the first step for city staff is to look at whether a proposed business is in fact a formula business under the definition, which is kind of twofold. One is, it's a type of commercial business establishment that along with ten or more other establishments. So that's one piece, so it's a numbering piece, and then the second piece is it maintains two or more features. Those features include standardized array of merchandise or menu, standardized facade, standardized decor or color scheme, uniform apparel, standardized signage, and then the last one is trademark or service mark. So there's really two pieces to that that get folded into whether or not a formula, whether or not a business that's being proposed within the City of Ojai is in fact a formula business. Now, if the proposed business is not determined to be a formula business, then the process is a zone clearance business license process, which is handled at staff level. If, so there's one, that's what I would call one bucket. There's a second bucket, which is if the proposed business is in fact determined through this definition I just mentioned to be a formula business, then it would constitute, require a conditional use permit. Those are noted within the Formula Business Establishment Ordinance itself. Additionally, and maybe even however, as a formula business within the provisions of this ordinance, no permit shall be granted if two of three characteristics exist as a proposed business, and I'll highlight those three. One is it's specializing in a short order or quick service food or drink. Two would be serves food or drink primarily in paper, plastic, or other disposable containers. Third one would be payment is made by customers before food or drink is consumed. So looking at all those parameters, if two of those three characteristics are met with that specific business, then even as it being fitting into the mold of a formula business, no permits issued. Additionally, within the code itself, there's findings. So as we, as we know with a conditional use permit, there's specific findings that have to be made for any use that requires a conditional use permit. If it fits within the bucket of a formula business, CUP required, there is additional findings that are required as a part of of the formula business itself. So there's already a base in terms of findings for conditional use permits. This kicks it up to another level in terms of additional findings that have to be made, and then are obviously with a conditional use permit reviewed and approved or determination made by this commission. Now. Specific, okay, so within this within this ordinance itself, there are specific parameters that exist if the formula business proposed is located within the downtown area. Those limitations relate to frontage limitations as well as business frontage limitations, as well as tenant size limitations. So there's ceilings that have been identified within the downtown area of the City of Ojai. Finally, limitations to the overall size. If, so let's say, for instance, it fits within the bucket of a formula business. Aside from the specific parameters for the downtown area just mentioned, there is this limitation to the size regarding formula businesses in terms of square footage, and that really kind of identifies a ceiling, if you will, in terms of a proposed business that would want to come into the city, so that is, that's kind of the ordinance in a nutshell. While it's short, it is very beefy in terms of what it contains and how that, and what the what the process looks like if it fits into one of those two buckets. Not a formula business in terms of not meeting the definition formula business, and then there's an array of parameters that that these businesses would have to go through, including a CUP. So in conclusion, really kind of the question for the commission tonight is kind of twofold. One is, does the commission believe additional review and or even revisions to the existing ordinance are necessary? In this case, if a majority says yes, then schedule the matter for public hearing, so it's kind of a two-pronged approach. We're in for discussion tonight and then public hearing potentially in the future. The other side to that, the flip side to that coin, is if, if no, meaning the commission states that there's not a need, there's a vote for no, then this would just simply be a recommendation to City Council moving forward with no changes recommended by the Planning Commission, so. With that, that concludes kind of my overview of this ordinance. I know Nikhil, I think the attorney may have a couple other pieces of information they want to pass along as well. And we we also did receive public comment in written form, which has been distributed to the commission prior to the meeting tonight. We've gotten four public comment pieces, so.
Okay. Well, thank you, Lucas. So as Lucas kind of mentioned, this is a two-step process. The first step of this process is does the commission think that there may be revisions or changes to this particular section of the code, the Formula Business Ordinance? The second part of it is, if there are changes, you know, that'll be, that'll have to be done at at a notice public, through a notice, a meeting with a notice public hearing. I just want to reiterate, the agenda item here does not have a public hearing. There is no public hearing set for this meeting. And so, yes, there is public comment, but there's no public hearing on this. Any, today, any action taken is either an action, as Lucas said, to recommend to the council no changes to the Formula Business Ordinance, or recommend to the or ask that the the business ordinance be brought back for changes. A couple of, I guess, I hate to use the word ground rules, but per the Brown Act and also per, you know, the, just so we stay on the right side of not having to do a recusal or not having to lead into questions of bias or prejudice, I would caution you, strongly, strongly caution you not to mention in any discussion today about specific businesses, specific locations, specific sites, specific individuals.
This is a restriction on commissioners, not on the public.
Yes, the public can, public can, and I, this is, the public has a First Amendment right to speak on anything. The reason I'm asking you not to mention specifics, locations, people, businesses, is because at any point, those businesses, people, or that site may come before the commission. And so, to preserve the commission's neutrality and to preserve, you know, your right to to, for, to be at a hearing where that matter is going to be decided, I caution you not to mention any specifics. The second thing I want to, I want to, I want, not to discuss any specifics. The second thing I want to say is that this is not really the forum for policy, there's no public hearing. So a deep policy discussion would be something that would perhaps would be something that you could do if you chose to bring it back for revisions, and that would be through a public hearing, but this is not really a forum for policy. This is an excellent forum to ask questions of Lucas about, you know, the Formula Business Ordinance, and, you know, for example, what certain terms mean, do certain terms need to be defined further? Do, you know, are, do additional findings perhaps need to be made? That sort of thing, so it's more of a general, this is, I would say, a step one. It's, you know, because, you know, the, it's not a gentized, it's a Brown Act item for a public hearing, we're not going to be able to do basically a full deep dive into this and take it apart and, you know, add, you know, and talk about, you know, the policy ramifications of some of these changes, but you know, this is, I understand we have two new commissioners and, you know, the other members of the commission, this doesn't come up before the commission very often, and, you know, it's been something that's been it's, as you can tell from the number of attendees today, it's a a matter that's important to the community, so this is a good opportunity for specifically asking questions and to say, you know, you know, for example, you know, the term in, under this section is used, what does that term mean? I don't see it defined, and so that could be a potential recommendation for a change, should you want to change it, but if you identify things that you, that you'd be interested in changing, then the correct thing to do would be ask for a motion to bring it back for review and and any amendments to the ordinance. So, anyone have any questions for me? Just, I, on that issue, yes, Kathy?
See, tonight is more informational.
Yes, and also, but you do have to make a, yes, but you do have to make a decision whether to bring it back or no changes.
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
Go ahead, please.
Could we also ask for just further study? Because, I mean, I'm not sure I have a handle on exactly what might or might not be desirable to change, I mean, it seems, anyway.
Yes, yes, absolutely, you can ask, you can ask staff to, for further information. For example, if you want to, like, for example, the number of currently operated formula businesses in the city, or what, how many applications the city receives, some, for example, data points would be something you could ask staff, and staff could present that in a staff report at a future meeting. So that would be an appropriate thing to ask for. Any other questions?
I'd rather you just start asking questions.
Okay, I saw, I did have, I think Steve did have a question of me.
I guess, I guess I don't have necessarily a question for Nikhil.
Oh, okay.
But I do have, I do have a lot of questions for for Lucas as to the meaning of different parts of the ordinance. So Kathy, Kathy Nolan, why don't you go ahead?
Okay, I have two basic questions, and then, and please, if if it's not appropriate for tonight, because we may make a decision, possibly, to have, you know, have a public comment or a discussion, hoping for discussion, just let me know, I will not be offended. So my, my first question is, what happened or what triggered the urgency for this, the Formula Business Code to go to City Council in April of two thousand twenty-one? Can we have a little background on that?
Oh, yeah, I can answer that for you. Any, we saw an opportunity to take a quick look at the, at this, at this section of the code and to evaluate whether or not, and really what it boiled down to, whether or not ten or eleven was the magic, was the magic number. We had been looking back at some of our records, there was information that was showing that there were ten that the, if it was considered to fall into the bucket of a formula business, it was ten. However, reading the code, it looked like, the way in which it was reading, it was maybe eleven. So getting clarification on that and doing it in a, what we were considering kind of a swift manner of an urgency ordinance seemed appropriate. Now, the reduction down to, I think, six is what was potentially being deliberated by council. I can't speak to the numbers specifically. I think we were looking at maybe half of that, or somewhere kind of splitting hairs in terms of that. That was kind of where we were finding the magic number. There wasn't a whole lot of research, if any research at all, that went into that, to that number, but the number is really what came about in terms of the confusion as to whether it was ten or eleven.
And without any specifics, I was curious, was there an applicant or some, this is, that came to the city that this triggered the urgency, this, we looked at, I'm not asking for any specific names or anything. I was just curious if that.
No, it wasn't driven by an applicant, per se, it was, it was, we saw an opportunity, we saw an opportunity to act fast with it, but there wasn't necessarily, it wasn't driven.
Okay, and then just one follow-up question to that, because I actually was on the Planning Commission when this came the previous time, which was
Amendment?
Two thousand and eleven and twelve.
Right.
But and I know we had quite a lengthy discussion and a consultant that came in, et cetera, but I thought it might be appropriate to share how the number ten, I know there's a there's a concern now, is it ten or eleven, but that aside, what, what triggered that ten or eleven to be kind of what I would call a doable or safe number? Is that information available to share?
Do you have that information?
Yes. I think it's a question, a question you leave us.
Do you have that? Part of the deliberations.
Yes.
You recall what the, how the deliberations went on ten versus eleven?
I was trying to remember, because that was like ten years ago.
Yeah.
So, and it was already in the code, and if I remember correctly, we kind of carried it forward. But I guess what I wanted to bring up, and just because I, not only for myself, but I thought for the entire commission, it would be good to know, why was that number selected? Whether it was ten or eleven, or whatever, you know, one's right or wrong, because we're figuring that out tonight as well. But I was just curious if that information was available to us to go back and look at, or if anyone, you know, staff have that, some information, background information on that.
I mean, that was, I think that was the initial question that went to council, was whether it's ten or eleven.
Well, that's not my question, whether it's ten or eleven, okay, I'm okay with that, we'll figure it out. But the question is, why would we have that number in the code as opposed to now, you know, went back to City Council and they were trying to get six? In other words, why would number, like?
Where does ten come from, is that the question?
Yeah.
Basis for that, yeah.
The basis for that, I can, I can go back and look at the record to see where the basis for ten came from.
You probably have old versions of the code somewhere.
Yeah, but I, I think Commissioner Nolan's question is based on the consultant that provided information. There was a number that was derived, and that number ended up being ten. That number was based on blank.
Right, and then, and
I can go back and look at the record on that, and that would be, that would probably be based from two thousand and seven, when it originally went forward.
And I think that would be helpful, because, you know, when it went back to City Council in April, they wanted to reduce it to six. So my real question is, when you're selecting whatever that magic number is, how or why do you select it, there's some criteria behind it? You know, why do you know, or do you pick fifteen? You know, it's not random, and there was a reason for it, and I, I'm not, I don't recollect, I wish I did, I'm sorry. Ten years ago, but I think it's pertinent, and so that's why I asked the question.
Yes, I can bring that back.
Okay, I would appreciate that, thank you.
Ten versus eleven question, the fact that the question exists confuses me because the plain language of the ordinance says ten other.
Right.
Which means eleven to me. Commissioner Trent?
I just had a quick question for Lucas. Can we do some research into the restrictions that other cities might use in the state of California? I just did some quick Googling searches and you know, there's other cities that have the same number ten, like Malibu, Arcadia, Coronado, but there's some, you know, and I don't know their, you know, what is exactly in their code, but they have that number ten in there as well. And I'm just curious, if that's like a standard practice? You know, like, is that
A round number, yeah.
A round number, yeah, like, like to Commissioner Nolan's point, where does that magic number come from? Is it just some guideline that someone picked a long time ago and everybody's been using it ever since? I don't know, but it would be interesting to find out what other cities might be using that same number. Why?
I, I also asked a question, I submitted a question to the City Council back in April exactly at the same point, because it was ostensibly a point of confusion between ten and eleven that caused this thing to be brought up before the City Council, and then the proposal was six. And so I asked, is there somebody applying who has more than six but less than ten or eleven franchises? And is that what caused this to come up? And so, in addition to wondering where ten or eleven came from, I'm kind of curious where six came from.
Exactly.
Do you know about that, Lucas? Was there was there discussion by the City Council as to why six, even? I know they didn't make the findings necessary for an urgency ordinance, but where'd the number come from?
Yeah, the number isn't necessarily a number that has any sort of bound findings, I mean, one could argue that it's maybe half of what we're talking about in terms of that number, but it's not based on a specific use or specific type.
So one might argue that any number is arbitrary. Unless, unless there's some, unless there's some standard practice somewhere, as Commissioner Trent said.
All right, where's that?
Are there, are there other questions for staff? I want to get through all of this before, before we have the public speak. So Commissioner Nolan?
I have another question, and I know that we're talking about physical locations here. But something else just came to me, and it's just a consideration, and we all might just go, no, that doesn't really matter, forget about it. But, and it was basically like online sales. And I know that that's, you know, really increased over the last year, and ten years ago, yes, there were online sales, but not to the degree that there, there is now. And we know that a lot of, you know, big, you know, stores have closed down, you know, many of their outlets, et cetera, et cetera, because of the shift with online, and this has been going on for quite a few years. So I only bring it up, is it something pertinent that may need to be added to the ordinance, or maybe not? I'm just kind of throwing it out there as a consideration.
Yeah, that's, that's a good question, I think we can staff can look into that further and bring something back.
Online sales versus brick and mortar sales is not in the ordinance right now.
I know, and that's
The question is, do we need to put it in, yeah?
Right, and it is, does it relate, is it pertinent?
Or do we need at least to discuss whether it should be put in?
Right, because there's definitely a shift in how people are buying and selling, you know, buying, selling.
Right, and, yeah, that's, that is a very good point, I hadn't really thought of that, but that can certainly play, that activity can certainly play into whether something should be defined or should not be defined as a formula business.
Yeah, I do we have more questions for staff or for the attorney? Go ahead, Commissioner Trent?
Sorry, one more quick question. I noticed in the definitions where it outlines, you know, what is a formulary business, and it kind of brings up some examples, rental sales or rental activity, retail, rental establishment, including restaurants, hotels, motels. Does it have, we have excluding as well, are there examples of excluding? I couldn't find any of that.
Remember, we've been told by the city attorney that including means including but not limited to.
But not limited to, okay.
Right.
Okay. All right. Okay.
So it's, it's not a finite list.
Yeah, yeah, it's a pretty broad, pretty broad term, yeah, and I was just wondering if we had any exclusions, it looks like there, I don't
There is one exclusion, I don't necessarily want to dive into the code, but just as a informational piece, within the definition, that paragraph before it dives into the, I want to say, the nine points that you see thereafter, it does say, "Formula business shall not include an automated standalone vending machine." So if we're talking about exclusions, I think So if we're talking about exclusions, I think that one is pretty clear.
Yeah, I see that one. Okay.
So.
Yeah.
Right. Oh, just a quick share about that. Ten years ago, you know, when we were doing this with the commission. We actually had a representative from one of the water filtration companies come and do a presentation. Because present, at that time, I think he had, I don't know that he had ten, but. Water filtration systems that, I don't need to name all the businesses, but he had them. And it was basically, you know, he wanted to make sure that they were excluded and, and he did exclude for that reason.
Okay.
Just that was a little background. Um, but, um, anyway.
Okay. Not, not seeing any immediate other questions. I have a few. And, uh, with Nikhil's warning, I'll try to stay away from. Particular businesses, but I think it's okay to talk about types of business.
Types, yes.
Okay, so, so just, go ahead, please.
Yeah, not types, but not, you know, if, if it's a location, if it's a location specific or an individual, no.
Okay, okay. Um, types of business. Banks could be formula businesses. Gas stations could be formula businesses. I'm, I'm wondering, uh, with, with, um. Lucas, do, do the businesses in town or, or real estate offices there, they have. You know, franchises all over the place. Do all of those businesses that are in town now operate under CUPs? Or did some of them come in? Uh, let me see what this says, effective two thousand and seven. And then amended in two thousand and nine and two thousand and twelve. But presumably ordinance seven ninety-eight. Modified something that existed before two thousand and seven. And I know businesses of the sort of gas stations and, and real estate offices and banks have been in the city. From times earlier than that. Are they all operating under CUPs?
Yeah. So in terms of businesses that are, that fit within the bucket of, of a formula business. And it, it spelled out in our, in the ordinance here, if they were in operation prior to the op- adoption of that ordinance, they really felt. They fall into the non-conforming section of our code. Um, and the provisions that exist there as a non-conforming use. So, uh, those parameters would be held in check. If any new businesses that are coming into the city. Um, fall within the bucket of the formula business. Then we look at it from a, a fresh new CUP in terms.
Okay. Okay. Um. A paragraph, this, all of this is in ten two seventeen thirteen. Paragraph. Five, I, uh, B five. Uh, talks about the downtown commercial land use designation of the city's general plan. And I've read, I've read title ten. Lucas will testify, we've been through a lot of it. But this is the first time that I recall seeing a downtown commercial land use designation. I don't believe that there's a zone with that name. And so how is that area defined?
So that is a great question and I can bring back a, um. Kind of an over, overlay map or a boundary map, if you will. That is handled through and addressed through the, the land use map itself. So that could be something that we, that this commission can use as a part of.
Useful for, for a subsequent discussion. Okay.
To help guide where that specific piece of the code fits into the mold of the entire community. Obviously that, that area is very focused.
Okay.
Is that on the.
Go ahead.
In our packet?
No, it is not in the packet. No.
Oh, it's not on the, on the general plan land use map?
It is on the general plan land use map, yes.
Oh, because we have that in our packet at the end of our notebooks. And is that the, um, G, uh, GC? Commercial, the. Commercial strip down Ojai Avenue.
I have it.
On thirty-three. In red?
It would be, it would be the, the G, no, DC, not the GC.
Oh. Oh, the DC is it? Oh.
Yep, downtown commercial.
Oh, I see. Okay. Thank you.
Um. Okay. And that's a different color from C one. No, C one doesn't appear.
Now, careful, you're comparing.
Yeah, I'm talking about zoning versus land use. So. What, so there's DC and GC? And they differ only in the floor area ratio allowed?
Yeah, not necessarily. There's more information within the general plan. If you want, I can break that down as well, so that the commission has kind of an understanding of what, uh, DC is. Because it is, it's a small pocket.
Yeah.
The area, so just like what you would have with any other, uh, land use designation or even zoning designation. How those two, those two maps, um, overlay each other.
That'd be great.
Um.
I don't have that.
You should have, you should have maps at the back of your notebook. One is.
I don't have one.
Map and one is the. General plan, yeah.
Well, yeah.
Okay, uh, a follow up to that.
But it's DC, but it's DC, correct?
UC.
DC, yeah.
Okay. Land use.
Another question, Lucas.
Yep.
If, uh. The head's gone.
Tip of your tongue?
Yeah, right. It was there, it was there a minute ago. Um. As I understand, the overall thrust of the ordinance right now, it defines what a formula business is. And then it says. It has certain characteristics, the nine that you mentioned, and I'd like to ask about a couple of those. Um, and then it says there's a particular type of formula business that cannot have a permit request. Approved or processed. And that's up in section B two that. Is primarily around the fast food and drink business. Uh, but those. But that is the only permit application. That cannot be accepted or processed for, for a particular type of formula business? I don't see any other exclusions. Of how the formula business is not allowed.
Yeah, I mean, you could almost call a lot of this, a lot of these pieces ceilings. I, and I mentioned the ceiling. Regarding the square footage, the ten thousand square foot. Uh, I think that's identified within this code as well.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that's a square footage where it puts a ceiling on even the use. It fits into that bucket. CUP required, the CUP required still limits the, like for instance, the size. So development standards, just like we have for any other, uh. New business or modification to a business that's looking at setbacks, that's looking at height limitations. There is, there is these limitations that are placed squarely within this ordinance itself. So it's almost an additional layer of, of considerations to be looking at for each of these uses.
Okay. Um, i- if we could go down to, uh, the definition, the section. Section D definitions, you've got nine different things there. And I understand that a standardized array of merchandise means fifty percent or more of the stock. Comes from a single distributor bearing uniform markings. I'm not sure exactly what that means. If you were selling, uh. Boxes of paper or a stationery. And, and all of the stationery came from, or you were selling greeting cards. And they all came from one particular maker of greeting cards or fifty percent? Is that what we're talking about here?
Yes. And remember, it's, it's, the way in which this is, this definition is written maintains two or more of the following features.
Right, okay.
In addition to that, that number. So there's, there's lots of different factors that were, that staff is looking at with each business that comes in.
Okay, with, with, uh, numbers two and three, the trademark and service mark. Is that, is that a trademark and service mark? On the, the products for sale or is it a trademark or service mark on the establishment, on the business?
I think it's on the business is the way in which I, I read that.
Okay.
Um.
Like source of goods.
It's, it's not on the business. It's a source of goods. So the trademark is.
Okay, thank you.
Is, is with the goods itself.
Yeah, it's actually in the definition, the second half of that. Source of the goods from one party. From those of others. Right.
All right. Uh, color scheme, facade. Uh, okay, I understand facade, uniform apparel means. What the people that work at the business are wearing. Signage. If I, if I had a chain of, of stores in the general retail business and I, and I owned them all. And I gave each of the stores a different name. Then the signage would be different, right? So it would not, it would not violate that, that aspect of this prohibition?
And it would be one piece to the puzzle in terms of how we would look at it.
Just like facade. If the street, if the store looked different. Okay. Uniform apparel standardized, all right. And anything that existed at the time of the adoption of the ordinance became legal non-conforming. Okay. I thought I saw something in here in, uh. In B five maybe, where it talked about the size of the structure. Or the size of the building or structure, and it also talked about street level frontage. I thought I, oh, it says, okay, shall include frontage on private parking lots. So if a business. Had a, a piece of property on Ojai Avenue. And they chose to use part of it for parking and part of it for sales. Then both the frontage on Ojai Avenue and the frontage on the parking lot. Would constitute street frontage and if it was more than twenty-five, then they can't get a CUP? Is that how that reads?
But, I mean, it's the, if, it's the frontage for the business itself. Um, and that's just, I think the way, so street level frontage shall include frontage on private. Parking lots and access ways where the commercial building does not abut a public street. So for instance, if there's a business that's on the back side or side facing that doesn't necessarily front the street. That business still has frontage, that frontage is still accounted for. It's not to say that if it's not along the street, it doesn't get counted.
No, I, I understand that, that other things count besides what's on the street. Uh, but we have, we have businesses and I don't know if they're in the downtown commercial. Uh, and I don't want to name any of them, but there are businesses that have parking spaces right in front of them. That, that's off-street parking. Does that, does that count as part of the twenty-five feet? That says if you have more than twenty-five feet, you can't get a CUP?
Include frontage on private parking lots and access ways where the commercial building does not abut a public street. Uh. I can get clarification on that, but I mean, to me, it's the, it's the frontage of the building that we're looking at here. It's talking about frontage on private parking lots and access ways where commercial buildings do not. Abut a public street. That's basically, the way I'm reading that, and Nikhil, correct me if I'm wrong here. The way I'm reading that is even if the, if it's private access, it's a private road, private access. We still account for the frontage of that building. It doesn't exempt it from the frontage building provision. Which is that twenty-five foot, uh, of linear feet on any street is the way it's, it's written. So it's an attempt at further clarifying that. If the commission feels as if that's not clear, if there's not enough clarification there, we can.
And.
Wouldn't that be like, um, building frontage when we, the same way that we consider building frontage as when we do signage?
Yes, actually, that's a good point, uh, Commissioner Lawless, because there, anytime that we're looking at signage. It's typically, it's typically tied to the frontage of the building. So we look at that and that then determines. The maximum area for a sign, but then we also have a cap for that as well. So. It could be something like sixty square feet, but reality is the maximum's thirty, right? So while there is that cap, there's still the limitation within our.
This is a good example of something that you might want to ask staff to bring back. For a future, uh, for a future meeting to amend and clarify, given that, you know, it's not readily apparent.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm starting to conclude that I don't understand what private parking lots are. If that's, if that's where the public can park and then go into a store, is that a private parking lot? It's not a public parking lot owned by the city. So I'd like some clarification on that.
Okay.
Because twenty-five feet isn't going to get you but a couple of parking spaces. And if you're already having some street frontage, then you're out of luck. You're way over twenty-five feet already. And I don't particularly care what businesses are here. I just want to make sure that the rules are clear to everybody.
And so that is a good example of why the commission might vote to seek, uh, to move to step two, which is seek. Uh. Revision of this coded. Um, to further clarify things that are not readily apparent or, uh, may need to be further defined.
Okay. Any more questions for staff or the city attorney at this time? Go ahead, Jake.
I have a question. Um. We did receive some public comments via email. Is that stuff, are we able to discuss those emails or is that something that we do at a later time?
So, uh, you can discuss the, something that was brought up in public comment and you can address it. But if it's a specific business or if it's, you know, what about, you know, this particular business or. That is this business falling or I'm an applicant and I want to, you know, what do I need to do? I would not, I would advise you not to discuss any of that, but if, you know.
Or to wait till a public hearing.
Right. But for example, if a member of the public was saying, um, I don't understand what, um, the term, um, you know. How you, how do you distinguish between small, medium and large sized businesses? Um, or when it says proposed formula business will contribute to an appropriate balance of small, medium and large sized. But I'm just, this is just an example. That would be something you could say that, you know, one of the public comments was, and I, and, and you could bring that to the co- commission's attention.
Okay. Cause the reason I was asking is because I, I did go through those and there was one. That did mention what sparked this whole, this whole topic. And I just didn't know if, if that's something. We talk about or we don't.
Yeah.
Well, if it's involving a specific applicant or a specific business, then I would advise not to discuss it.
Yeah, don't, don't prejudice yourself before a public meeting. That's all.
Understood.
Yeah. Okay. Any more questions at this time? We'll always come, we can come back to discussion. At any point, uh, once we've had the public hearing. But if there are no other immediate questions, I'd like to open the public hearing.
It's, it's a public comment.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Like to open the public comment portion of this meeting. And ask Sheri, do we have anyone in the waiting room? And if so, could you bring them in one at a time?
Yes.
People, people will be subject to the usual three-minute limitation on comments. Uh, and I ask the indulgence of all the members of the public for that, so that we can get out of here tonight.
Okay, so we have fifteen attendees and we're going to start with Warner Ebbink.
Okay.
And Warner, you're, you're on. You have three minutes. Are you there? You're muted.
Please unmute. There you go.
Hello, commissioners. Uh, thank you for your time. Um. I just wanted, I'm actually just here to listen in on, uh. I just wanted, I'm actually just here to listen in on uh, what you guys have planned, I have. Multiple commercial spaces in Ojai with multiple tenants, and I just want to see how it will affect. Our future in Ojai.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Sheri, who's next here?
Okay, our next is Vanessa Rogers. And Vanessa, make sure you're unmuted. Okay, there you go, and I'll start the timer, three minutes.
No comment, just here listening, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much for showing up. We don't normally get much of a crowd at public, or at uh, planning commission meetings, and I think we're all kinda happy to see that. The community take uh, more direct involvement in what we're doing here.
Okay, we have Tammy Reinhardt.
I see a Victoria Johansson.
Okay, hold on, I actually have a lot more before, she just lo- joined, so we have Tammy Reinhardt.
I've been here from the beginning, actually.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, Victoria Johnson, we'll go with, to Victoria.
Hi, my name is Jacqueline Burge, I'm here with Victoria Johansson, and I'm speaking on half of, on behalf of Victoria. Who owns both FIG and Bungalow in Ojai. I also own a yoga studio in town, and I've been, I've had multiple businesses in town over the last twelve years. And I'm just asking the planning commission to open the, and review the current code. And, you know, we're sharing a little bit today, I hope more retailers are going to share their personal experience of how. Their current code is directly impacting the businesses in the now, not in the future. And we're proposing changes to that code to protect against adverse economic costs to our vital businesses. Tourism is driven to Ojai by the beauty and the uniqueness of Ojai. And Victoria and other fellow retailers along Ojai Avenue and the side streets have enjoyed a healthy. Supportive and competitive relationship over the last ten years. Especially in this period of the most rapid growth in our small-ish town as it stands now. We want to be really clear that we support new businesses and shops opening and a healthy growth for our town. We do not view it as competition, but rather as an opportunity for diversity. We coexist and we thrive together, our community of tourists and residents enjoy an eclectic mix of hand-curated items that can be found. But more than anything, they are drawn to the cohesive differences our shops represent as a whole. Today in our meeting, we're learning that the code is really geared toward a restaurant, food and beverage. You know, with, with um. Uh, what you shared today in specifics of the code, we ask that you look at the code. Uh, from the viewpoint of our retail stores. And I'm also not gonna gloss over the fact that it is very difficult to grow a store and survive and thrive in a small town. Victoria personally manages and operates both of her stores. And hires local ho- high school students, who then come back as college students on breaks, in summer and spring and winter, and work at her stores. Victoria and myself make a point of giving directly back to the community whenever we can. Our retailers have built relationships over the years that are now in jeopardy. And I'm gonna be very direct here and say why? Because a chain store called Blue Ojai is now here. And from this moment forward, let's call it that, a chain store. You can gloss over terms and change the language, but at the end of the day, it is a chain owned and operated by one individual. You can change the name, but you can't change who runs it. We share this information because the largeness of her retail empire is crushing our small-town retail community. Click would have to do nothing to crush it, they just have to exist. I don't want to do a clinic really on how retail businesses work, we have all heard the story of Amazon and the small-town hardware store, and I know that might seem insane to mention Amazon here. But that hardware store doesn't exist anymore. The large stores come in at the height of our tourism flock here, they open their stores, and then when the tourists move to the next hot town. Those big chains leave, and then we're left with high rents. And very little entrepreneurs willing to open stores in our town. But the most important thing that I'd like to mention today. Is that from the beginning of. Click coming into town, we've heard about this for about two months.
Sure, cool, let's see the three minutes are up.
Victoria started to lose her territories and her vendors, and it, it's really impacting her business. So although the code is based on food and beverage service, we really ask that you revisit the code to save our vit- vital retail businesses locally. If we don't protect them today, they will be gone. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Sheri, who's next?
Let's do Kenley Newfeld. And Kenley, make sure you're, there you are, go ahead, Kenley.
Getting a lot of feedback here.
Um, I sat through your three-hour-plus meeting, too, I'm glad this is at the top of the, this is at the top of the agenda tonight, um. Can you hear me better now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Um, so Kenley Newfeld, I live uh, on Creekside in Ojai. And I was one of the community leaders who drafted. The ordinance language in two thousand and seven, and uh, brought it to the city council, and at the time, that council was not very receptive to. The ordinance language, and so I, I knocked on doors. Uh, with a, a few other people, and we collected well over a thousand signatures in support of the ordinance. Language. Uh, and brought it back to the city council as a ballot measure to be placed on the next election, and um, at that time, the council decided to take action. And uh, draft an ordinance. Uh, it's virtually identical to the one that um, we worked on as a community. And then, the language that you see is primarily drawn from other uh, other um, cities who had ordinances at the time. And uh. So, we were very happy that it was passed, and that we have the ordinance.
Losing you again, sorry.
Uh, for a time, and we didn't. Um, one of the big businesses in town, um, was very much opposed to it, uh. Sorry, that, one of the big businesses in town, uh, was very much. Uh, this was.
Anyone else understand what the gentleman's saying? Getting a lot of feedback.
He sold it, and it's a very successful business, I mean, I think Westridge is. Done a great job in their location there, so, um, I think it's really important in town to be protected. Try, can you hear me now? Can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Commissioners? You can hear me now? Okay, I apologize, I'm in a very bad cell phone reception location, so. I hope you heard that, I hope that we can, you know, help continue to protect our businesses in Ojai, our small businesses. And that's why this ordinance is in place, and that, um, it's really important that we maintain the integrity. Of the language that is in the current ordinance, and not. Uh, make too many changes, if anything, make it a little bit more stricter, as the city council has suggested. Um, and we can continue to uh, thrive in our community, I think our businesses in, in Ojai have, have a. A, a lot of diversity over the last uh, decade. And um. Helping to maintain that, and uh, makes Ojai such a, a great place. And um. Yeah, that's it, just really, let's, let's maintain the integrity of this ordinance, and if we need to clarify anything, clarify it, but let's not like. Uh, you know, try to make any t- too many drastic changes to it, um. So, that's all I got, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry for my, sorry for my uh, connection.
Thank you, Sheri, who's next?
Tammy Reinhardt. Unmute Tammy, there you go.
Sheri, can you, can you drop some of these people off, the, the gallery's gonna get awfully full here in a moment.
I'm trying here, okay.
Very good. Uh, Tammy, please go ahead, address the commission.
Oh, I just wanted to say that I'm, I'm here to listen, and, and uh, I have no comment, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Summer McCombs.
Hi, I am also here just to listen, let me comment, I'll let others speak today.
Okay. I hope that uh, at the end of the evening, all of our visitors. Correctly understand that the commission is doing the best it can with the code. And we're taking the job seriously, so. Please go ahead, Sheri, who's next?
Michael Graves.
There he is.
Unmute.
Please unmute, sir, there you go.
Hello.
Good evening, please address the commission.
Yes, uh, first of all, I just wanted to say I agree with Jackie and Victoria and their comments, uh, that was. A lot of what I was gonna say. Uh, secondly, I would say your question earlier about the number of stores and whether ten. Or six, or whatnot, whether that's an arbitrary number. Um, I would propose that it's not arbitrary, because. The more stores a business has, the higher the buying power, so. Six stores is six times the buying power of a small business with one store. Ten stores is ten times the buying power of a small business with one store. So as to the arbitrariness of it, I think that's. Uh, that's the, the meaning there, and then I think that online orders and e-commerce definitely needs to be uh. Considered here as a factor, because. Uh, the store in question has the website linked to all of their stores, so. They are selling at, you know, eleven stores times. That, whereas a small store is just selling for one. And that's all.
Cynthia Convery?
Hi, can you hear me? Hi, Cindy Convery, um, I, I wanted to follow up on Victoria and Jackie's comment as well. In a little more detail, the store they're talking about, Click. They, you know, they have a lot of money, they can afford to sit or, stay in business for a year and not earn an income to build up their market, which would drive out. Local businesses. A lot of the distributors that sell to them have told local businesses, we won't sell you our products anymore, because Click is our biggest customer. And that's what I'm speaking to, is that local businesses die when these companies come in, and they're not. You know, they're not Starbucks and Walmart, they're like ten stores, but they have a lot of money, and they can really drive out local families. So it's your responsibility, our responsibility as a community to make sure that this ordinance. Is very uh, airtight, and to that. Point, I want to say that I really feel like Ojai needs to bring in an expert on this, times have changed, companies have. Tons of money, you know, they have billions of dollars to do all kinds of sneaky things, like change the name from Click to Blue Ojai, so you don't. Really know what that is, right? But um, bringing in the expert in the business is the one, is the item to do, and from all the questions. That you've all asked tonight, which were all great questions, but it speaks to the point that none of us are experts in writing. Franchise ordinances, or formula business ordinances. It's a very, very specific field, and Ojai needs to bring in that person to look at what's going on. I think Commissioner Trent, you mentioned the ordinances in other towns like Malibu, and. You know, those are ten, fifteen, twenty years old, things have changed, our ordinance has holes in it, you can shoot a cannonball through there. And people are trying to sneak in, I think last year. A Starbucks-ish type company tried to buy a coffee house in Ojai. Leave that name on there, whatever it was, Java Joe's, whatever, leave the name on the front, but when you walk into the door, you're in. Their branded place, so that's the kind of little nefarious stuff that goes on, you've all seen Aaron Brockovich and. Whatever movies out there, they're all based in truth, I will guarantee you that. And um, I'll leave you with this, I sent in a comment, and I included a link. To the Institute for Local Self-Reliance, it's a nationwide nonprofit, they c- they have. Deep expertise in this type of situation, because they protect small towns from exactly this scenario. And they connect towns together that are facing the same issues, so you can really get. You know, this expertise doesn't have to cost an arm and a leg, Ojai's kind of on the ropes, on the budget, right? But it's really worth investing whatever we can into expertise on this ordinance, to keep the town viable. To keep the town um, as valuable as it is, and to preserve our unique character, and that's my comment.
Okay, we have Jamie Fleming.
Uh, thank you. I'm head of the Ojai Chamber of Commerce, and as you can imagine, my chamber office has. Received calls from merchants in Ojai. Were very interested to see your commission, uh, decide to review and restructure the Formula Business Establishment Code. With special attention to the definitions of what constitutes a formula retail store. When I looked at the code. It stated. So clearly, uh, a protection and restrictions for food establishments. And I think at that time, that probably maybe was important, but I think. Retail store definitions and restrictions kind of are vague, if not even existing in there. And I like the creative. Approach that the commission took back then. To define ways, to really define a food store that was a chain, and I think we need to. Take Cindy Convery's idea, maybe define an expert. Who might be able to come up with similar definitions on retail. Because I understand there are a lot of legal things that are kind of in our way. But there must be ways to define a retail store chain. And I think one of the key elements that I'm really hoping that needs to be reviewed and restructured is. And it's been brought up already here, how do we determine what really qualifies as the number of stores? And I'm also a believer in this newer age that we need to include e-commerce sites. Because that is also part of uh, their structure. And that leads to me, again, to where I second Michael Graves. Uh, what he was bringing up, and this, again, is all addressing, um, Commissioner Nolan, you know, your question is, why is it ten or six? Buying power, I'm telling you, is critical when it comes around to these numbers, and. Here we are as a community trying to encourage. Stores that are just one store or two, so they're really unique, people come to Ojai for unique stores, instead of going to La Jolla and seeing the same stores you see in exchange. In, in malls, or in uh, resorts, or in, in Carmel. Here, it's unique, and so. For us to expect a store owner who has a unique one store to compete with a store that. Due to whatever reasons, they got in under, let's say, ten-store qualification. But they're actually buying with twenty, thirty, forty, fifty store clout with buyers, we all know where that leads, and so. I'm really, really hoping that you will continue to move this to a uh, public hearing and uh, review and restructure.
Okay, we'll go to Barbara Bowman.
Okay, you got me?
Gotcha.
Yes.
Okay, good. Listen, everybody has made very good points here, and I think that we went back and we were doing the chain many, ten years ago, I think you said. And ten years ago, we were dealing with food, worrying, worrying about all the chain food, and we never thought in terms of retail. But we have become this destination spot. So, all of a sudden, chains are looking at us, and it's frightening, and you know. Just looking at what happened to Santa Barbara, how devastated it was when they put the sale in Uevo in. And that whole downtown area is devastated, everybody that's interesting, unusual moved to Upper Montecito. Where it's one store, one store, one store. So what happens is you also can be left with a very vacant town when this whole hot session is over. Those people come, they leave, you can't depend on them as a community, you can't depend on them to raise money for you, they can't depend on them to fight. Waste management, you can't, you know, they're, they're out-of-towners coming in here to place their business here and compete with all. The people that have been here supporting the town for years, so I do think you need to revisit the ordinance, and I have great faith that you will do that. Based on the conversations tonight, I think everybody's very aware now of what we're talking about, and thank you for having this meeting tonight.
Thank you, ma'am.
Let's go to Bill Miley.
Hello.
I want to support the need for revising the ordinance. I have a couple, a bunch of points here that I can make. Number one is, I have done some reference reading on formula chain store mitigation prohibition. And I found they need to be crafted very carefully, involving much of the principal words that are found in cities' general plans as well as land use planning in order to make it substantial and stand up if it goes to court. Two, I also read where the general plan elements need to be written in such a way as to reinforce the formula ordinance. Like, if one was flipping through the general plan and looked at the circulation element, there would be comments there limiting, placing limitations on traffic in business areas. Three, I gather a weak factor is the number chosen by a city for the number of stores which a city would refuse to permit beyond. In some cases, the judge might find that number to be arbitrary. Four, in one example, the city listed exemptions to include gas stations, banks, grocery stores. I doesn't have that. We don't have that list. I could assume we grandfathered them in, or we just overlooked them. If I were a formula store owner applicant, I might see that as a weakness to get mine approved. Five, in my reference reading, I read where if it seems like there's any indication the ordinance was developed or passed to minimize competition for local in-place stores, it might be considered beyond the law. Also from my reading, it seems limitation on size, square footage, is one good way of limiting formula store applications because it could be supported by local business sizes and the built environment. Seven, I would suggest we carefully craft parking requirements so that any new stores will not be able to get a pass on meeting parking ordinance requirements or in lieu fees. Eight, a scary example, which would devastate our city and the Ojai Valley, is allowing a quote dollar unquote store to locate here. Like Ms. Convery, I attached to the, a link to the Institute for Local Self-Reliance, which I read. They have a good fact sheet on the whole question about dollar store. Nine, I gather it's really important to correct anyone who attempts to establish a reason for such an ordinance as protecting local businesses. Maybe I already said that. Ten, I am very supportive of a formula chain store ordinance, but I believe it needs revising to make it much stronger. Also, eleven, and this is the last part, bringing in new businesses for storefront retail is really important, especially if there are needs of Ojai residents not currently being met, which drive folks figuratively to Amazon, other web-based sites, other physical location stores. It might be interesting to do a count of local available retailers against the list of basic resident needs.
Your three minutes are up, Mr. Miley.
In closing, I like having a formula store mitigation ordinance, which protects the city's stated values and how we enforce it. Thanks.
Leslie Davis?
Hi, my name's Leslie Davis, longtime Ojai resident. Have had roots here since the early seventies. I, along with Kenley Newfeld, was one of the team of citizens who worked on the original ordinance. I would say at least a year went into that project. Many important discussions happened at the town hall meetings that went into place to create that ordinance. One was very focused on what is Ojai? Is Ojai for tourism or for locals? And, you know, at the end of the day, we all had to agree that the retail and eating establishments in Ojai needed to serve both. And so I think that's a very, very important concern if we're revisiting the ordinance, is to make sure that we do take into account tourism because we do rely so heavily on tourism. But also, keep it local. At the time, we had a shop local campaign that was a grassroots initiative that the city never took on officially. But we made stickers and flyers and, you know, social media posts and really encouraged people to shop local. I want to just say for the record that I agree with many things that many people have said here tonight. In regards to what Cindy was saying about that the ordinance, you could shoot a cannonball through it, I just want to say that at the time in twenty, or two thousand and seven, we did not have a city ordinance, a formula business ordinance at all. So at that time, Jersey Mike's opened a restaurant here, and nobody understood why they were able to open until a friend of ours went to the city and found out that we didn't have an ordinance on the books. The city of Ojai eventually sued him because he submitted paperwork for an ordinance that was not in the correct format. So then he and Kenley Newfeld and a whole team of us got together, created an ordinance, gathered over a thousand signatures, and then took it to the city. And as Kenley said, they didn't want to do a special election, so the city took it on. And we worked as a team collaboratively, citizens and the council with many, many town hall meetings. So I just want to, Barbara Bowman, many of us were there together late, late nights. And I want to reiterate that if this ordinance is to be revised and strengthened, which I really hope it will be, I hope that there is plenty of time for public comment. I also want to point out that this, that the number ten was based on much research done at the time by citizens as well as the city attorney. And I would like to propose or request that that research gets updated and to find out if any of those other towns that we based our ordinance on have updated theirs and what they've done. In light of the economic growth in Ojai, both with real estate as well as the retail and restaurant changes that we've seen, I think it's very important that we strengthen this ordinance. As others have said, we don't want out-of-towners coming in and just profiting off our tourism and not being a committed part of our community. Regarding the ten thousand square foot limitation, we specifically at the time talked in depth about Rains as well as the Caro's building, which is now two separate units with the coffee shop and the proposed business coming in. So we specifically looked at the properties in Ojai and tried to layer in those, you know, layers of protection specifically for those establishments. Sorry, just looking at my notes. I think everyone has said such amazing things. And I just want to reiterate that in two thousand and seven, we saw the loss of the Main Street. As Barbara Bowman said, State Street, we saw it everywhere all over California where the corporatization of Main Street was happening. And I feel like we are at another turning point where we really need to look at that with the economic growth that we're seeing. And I especially want to see the the online business piece addressed. I'm getting emails regularly from this business, Click. And as a marketing professional, I can tell you that they're making a lot of money on online sales. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, we'll go to Bianca Rowe.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the Ojai Planning Commission. My name is Bianca Rowe, and I'm the owner of In the Field, a retail boutique that's been in business on Ojai Avenue for seven years. We've survived the Thomas Fire, the Woolsey Fire, and the COVID pandemic. Yet today, I believe, we are faced with the most challenging adversary of all, the deconstruction of our small business community, which is the heart of our town because the current formula store ordinance has many inconsistencies. I strongly urge you to determine this evening that modifications to the formula business regulations are needed and to hold a public hearing on a revised ordinance. We've reviewed and identified some definitions to the existing code that could be considered for corrections moving forward. We'd like to propose them this evening with the hopes that we're able to present the planning commission useful, reasonable, adaptable adjustments that can move us towards policy restructuring. When reviewing the existing code, the planning commission and city council could consider the following. Lowering the number of establishments that qualifies a formula business. It's currently ten, and this number could be reduced to five or six. Clarifying trademark and service mark criterion to include specifically shared use, it could be refined. Consider the underlying ownership of the business as a criteria for establishing or evaluating a formula business because the name of the business is not as important as the proprietorship. And the internet is a modern sales tool. We believe it should be a considered establishment. Augmenting the ordinance to be relevant to internet sales and shared e-commerce platforms. You see, the current formula business ordinance, it isn't sufficient and it isn't working. One example of this is the apparent finding that the business taking over the Caddy Wampers location next to Beacon, Blue by Click, is possibly not a formula business. Click's proprietor owns nine bricks and mortar establishments known as Click, Click e-commerce and social media shoppable sites, two subsidiary stores, and is opening a store in Ojai under the same subsidiary name, Blue by Click. In total, that is eleven existing brick and mortar locations, multiple e-commerce, all operated by the same proprietor. This, together with what I understand to be a standardized decor amongst other possible similarities with the other, would satisfy at least two of the eight criteria. On one hand, I believe Blue by Click does meet the definition of formula business. However, the lack of clarity here leans into the need for the reevaluation of the ordinance. This catalyst of Click's establishment in Ojai has revealed that we are vulnerable. We need to identify this situation and realize that it defines the future of what Ojai will become because we don't want to skip over this moment lightly and wake up to find that we're Abbott Kinney in Venice and that there are no local owner-operated businesses left. You see, formula stores have deep pockets, multiple sales channels. They can pay inflated rents, which can-
Bianca, your three minutes are up, so wrap it up, please.
This evening, we formally request the planning commission to vote yes for the reevaluation of the current code. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. We have Megan Wilkins.
I don't have anything to say. I just wanted to be here and hear what was going on. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
And we have someone with a phone number who doesn't have a name. So here you're on, phone number three one zero eight six nine six six one seven.
Please unmute and identify yourself and address the commission, please. Hello?
Hey, and in in depends. Can you hear me?
Occasionally.
My name is Jenny Prebor, and I am in and I'm here to listen.
Okay.
I think we have, oh, Mayor Sticks.
Good evening, Mayor.
Hello. Nice to hear all of you. And I just want to say thank you to the community for showing up and for your astute and timely comments. And thank you, planning commission, for taking care of this. Much gratitude to all of you. Yay.
All right. Thank you.
Hey, that's all I have on the list unless somebody raises their hand and tells me I missed them, but.
Anybody out there on Channel Ten who's listening in that wants to join the conversation?
Okay, that's all we have.
Hearing none, then. I will close the period of public comment and we'll come back to the commission. I've generated a couple of questions in the meantime, listening to all of this. I'm wondering if anyone else has.
Chair Quosi, before I
Yes, sir.
Before you, I just want to reiterate my warning regarding specific businesses. And even if it's responding to a public comment regarding any specific business, I would advise the council, our commission, not to. It's not an agendized item. It's not the form for that right now.
Additional questions? Commissioner Trent, please. Go ahead.
This one's more for staff, and it kind of goes along with one of the speakers, I can't remember her name off the top of my head, but she helped draft the initial ordinance with Kenley.
That would be Leslie Davis.
Yes, Leslie Davis. Thank you. As she was mentioning, if any researchers, if we could do some research on these other cities that had similar ordinances to see if they had my, if they might have changed theirs since two thousand and seven or, you know, prior. It'd just be interesting to know what's going on with those other cities as well.
Okay. A question for Nikhil or for Lucas, I'm not sure. Is formula business or formula business establishment a standardized phrase within the state of California? Or is it one that we use and other people have other names for it?
Go ahead, Lucas.
Yeah, I don't know that I necessarily have a response to that as to whether or not it's a standardized phrase that's being used by other cities. But like Commissioner Trent had mentioned, looking at some other cities as to how they've crafted their ordinance regarding franchise businesses, not necessarily formula, they may have another name for it. Could sort of look into that and provide some feedback to the to the commission.
I think that would be useful. I just, I was hoping it was a standard phrase so that you could search more effectively for what other cities are doing.
Yeah, I mean, oh, go ahead, Nikhil.
I'm sorry. The formula business is a term of art that comes up in many, many ordinances. And it's just, that is the commonly accepted term for certain types of businesses. And so you'll see this quite a bit. It's the same thing, for example, like, short-term rental is not necessarily a statutorily defined term, but it appears over and over in codes specifically because, but I don't, I don't think formula business is, and I can confirm with, I can confirm with Lucas at a later date, but I don't think it's defined in the state code, but it is, it's a term of art.
Okay. I mean, franchise has some similarities, but it, at least, I think, is is defined perhaps in different ways, but it has some similarities. Commissioner Nolan, you had a question?
Actually, it was more of a comment. I wanted to say I agreed with Commissioner Trent. And I also really wanted to thank the members of the public, the business owners, who not only sent the emails to us, but who showed up tonight. And thank you for any of the links. I did happen to go on to them. I really appreciated that. But I think what I'm just generally, and this is my take on it, I'm grateful that we have the formula business code and that it happened when it did. But at the same time, things have changed since two thousand and seven, and we really need to like update the ordinance. And so I think thoroughly looking at it, and if we do need to have a consultant, maybe we do, maybe we don't, staff can come back to us and let us know. But I would take that seriously, that we do need to come back and look at it because I feel like, you know, the economy of our downtown is, I mean, it's vital and it's crucial. And not just for the money, but just for the people, the people that live here, the people that work here, whether you're a resident or you're a tourist. I'm a resident, but if I go somewhere else, I'm a tourist, I can completely appreciate that. But I really think this is crucial. And then, of course, tying it in with the general plan. So I'm just really more making a comment, support that we do need more information, that we do need to have a public hearing. And it just needs to be, I think, updated, which would include like the e-commerce, internet sales, et cetera. I know I brought that up at the beginning, but then I heard a lot of the comments that came in also had that as well. So, and I did appreciate the comments also about like where the number, you know, whether it's, you know, five, ten, or twenty, whatever the number we ended up picking, but why, you know, some pertinent information relationship to that. So, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Lottis- Okay. Commissioner Lottis, you had your hand up first.
Yes, I think I would second everything that Commissioner Nolan said. You know, and when we look, this is an issue that tourist towns have to deal with. And so it's mostly the tourist towns that have these ordinances. And they generally do refer to them as formula businesses, as much as I know about it. But, you know, I think, I think we're going to have to be just as creative this time around. Perhaps as we were the last time around, because this is brand new, really. This issue after the pandemic and everything, I think is going to hit us very hard. And I did appreciate, somebody talked about how we were creative in defining a formula business. The, and I thought that, I really do agree with that. And I'm sure we can do the same thing with the focus on retail stores. And I also appreciated all the comments from the people coming forward. But the strength of Ojai is, is our unique character, as we say all the time. But part of that is certainly the local business. The, also the balance of resident and visitor serving. And I think some of these policy issues, I'm hoping we still have time to kind of bring, fold those. That policy discussion into the general plan to kind of set the stage for this. And talk about how important it is and basically kind of hone in on a lot of the comments that we got tonight. So I, yeah, I'm definitely needing to looking, reevaluating this with the focus on the retail. Making it so that we don't lose our local businesses and supporting them. And anyway, that's all I have to say for now.
Yeah, and we have, we have, as a commission, looked in some depth at the housing element. But there are other elements of the general plan that we have not yet reviewed as a commission. And I presume that Lucas will bring them to us timely. So that if there are aspects of what we all heard tonight that need to be moved into some of those other elements. That we'll have that opportunity to suggest it to the city council.
And Steve, I think it appears that the consensus among the commission does appear to be that it'd be brought back. For further revision and study with specific direction to staff. I think it would perhaps help Lucas at this point if. The, if the commission could identify what further study needs to be done. And then, so that Luca, and then, and then a motion to bring it back for amendment as necessary. And a public amendment in a public hearing.
I still, I still have some questions on, I don't know if it's definitions or applicability. And I had sent some questions to Lucas that I thought might be useful to the discussion tonight. The current, the current ordinance talks about fast food and drink. And I'd like to know what part of a business has to be there? Or if we define other categories of, let's call it prohibited formula businesses. What, what again? Qualifies or disqualifies a business in that way? For example, if a gas station has a mini mart. Does it, is it engaged in commerce with fast food and drink? Some would say yes, some would say yes, but their real business is selling gasoline. And I think maybe that's an area that, that should be looked at as, as we consider all of this. There is a part of the ordinance right now that says. You have to establish that there will not be an over-concentration of formula business establishments. In the immediate vicinity or the city as a whole. I'm not sure what an over-concentration means. If there's one, is that an over-concentration? And, and. One that I keep coming back to in, at various times and various ways, I guess. What is exactly is the city's small-town character? And how is a business designed to enhance the small-town character? The, the, the common characteristic that I see of businesses in the town is that they're small. But how do you, do you design a business to be small? Are there other characteristics that one could say? I have a business here in town and it's been designed to enhance and support the small-town character. I don't know what that means. And I'm uncomfortable with something that, to me, is that vague in the municipal code. I asked a question earlier about service marks and trademarks. And I believe Nikhil said the service marks and trademarks refer to the products for sale.
Yes.
Not to the establishment, not to the business establishment.
Yes.
And without getting into any names of any businesses here or elsewhere. The impression I got was that the biggest complaint here was. That there is a new business in town that is selling product with. Trademarks or service marks that other businesses in town have in the past sold. And fear that they will in the future not be able to sell. Is that a fair understanding of what we heard tonight? And, and if so, is that, is that something that could or should be? A matter of, of description within the trademark and service mark portion of this ordinance? You're looking, you're looking, I think, I think there is a general consensus that we need to bring this back. But I would also like to give staff as much, in a legal fashion. And Nikhil will keep his eye on us. Give staff as much as we can of things that should be considered when we come back for a public hearing. And so if anyone else has other considerations that should be. Part of what staff thinks about in coming back, and I don't expect Lucas to come back with a red line, per se. I have a sinking feeling that we're going to have a public hearing and a meeting. And then maybe at a second public hearing, have a red line to consider. So Commissioner Nolan, please, go ahead.
Yes, so a couple of things that came up tonight that we, I could use some clarification on. That would have been in three. Or section, excuse me, yeah, section three where it refers to the proposed formula business will. Contribute to an appropriate balance of small, medium, and large. And it was just clarification on, is that a square footage? Is it based on volume of sales? Maybe you could come back with. How do we determine what, what that means?
This is in B three?
Yes.
Or B three, I, I, I?
Yes, I, I, yeah. Beef, yes.
Yes, okay, B three, I, I.
Exactly. There was that. And then Steve, this is one you have brought up earlier that we were, I don't know if we completely understood it. Maybe we need a little more clarification. This is just, I'm reiterating, and that was on B five. And that had to do with the size. In other words, the linear feet of storefrontage and the square footage. So maybe that could come back with a little more clarification. And I think it also may tie into, if we look at any new ordinances. For, you know, similar cities our size that happen to be tourist oriented, you know, just to take a look at. If people are looking at something new as far as that goes. I think we should also make sure that we include retail. And be clear about it. And one of the members of the public tonight mentioned possibly. If we look at the breakdown for, I'm just going to call it the fast food and drink section, that would have been B two. There's almost a key, you know, like you've got to. Hit two of those characteristics. Maybe there's a way to do that with retail also. I'm not sure what that is, but it's probably worth exploring.
Well, you have to pay for product before you can take it out of the store.
Right.
But that's true of any store, I think.
Yeah, usually with retail, you don't do that. So, well, I'm not sure what the answer is, because I think that's a deeper dive, as we like to say. But putting that on there, the other one, and I had thought about this too and had it mentioned it. But then one of the members of the public brought it up and I checked it off again on my list. And that was. A method for, to establish the ownership. Is there a way to do that and build that into the ordinance? So in other words, you know, is it somebody out of the country and blah, 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 blah? And basically, we're losing our small-town local businesses because that is not in the ordinance. The other one is to make sure we look at and explore internet or e-commerce sales. Those were the, I think that was all I had on there. Well, I'll let somebody else go in. If I have another one, I'll add it at the end.
Jake or John, anything you'd like? John, go ahead.
Oh, I'll just chime in real quick. Yeah, I mean, I don't know if we still got folks, but. You know, I just wanted to thank everybody for their passionate support of this ordinance. I think it's a critical piece to Ojai and our character. And, you know, what we're all about. So it's very, very neat to see everybody have such passionate support of it. And I certainly support revising the plan. I think, you know, it was written fourteen years ago. Obviously, things have changed, so we need to kind of take a look at some of the verbiage in here. And I like the idea of looking at the number, lowering the number of establishments. I think looking at some of those other cities, they're much larger than us. Like, I think Malibu's at least twenty-five thousand people, you know, and I think their limit is ten, too. I'm not sure about Arcadia, but I'm sure they're pretty big, too. So I, maybe there's some sort of ratio.
Arcadia is bigger than Malibu, for sure.
Yeah, maybe there's some ratio with population we can look at. And I do like the idea of looking at the ownership piece. I think that's something to, to bring up. And also online sales, et cetera. But I had a question for Nikhil, and Bill Miley brought this up, and I thought it was important. And I think that some of the current code outlines this. And I was curious, he mentioned that. To help with this in like a court, in a legal situation, it helps having support in the general plan for the ordinance? Is that correct? Is that why there's a lot of mention in here of the current general plan? And some of the verbiage is outlined from the current general plan, like to Steve's point. You know, preserve and enhance city's small-town character. I think that's pulled right from the general plan.
So, everything we adopt, every, every ordinance we adopt. Has to be consistent with the general plan. Whenever you see an ordinance, there'll be findings that say this is. The city, the city council or the planning commission finds that the ordinance is consistent with this general plan. The general plan is sort of the guiding document for any, anything the city does. And so when it's found to be consistent within, within the general plan, that's simply a call out to say. It's simply a call out to say that what is being done is. What is being done is, is something that is what the city envisions as part of its, you know, what. Envisions is what has been laid out in its general plan. So.
So local legal rationale.
Exactly. So, oh, it's.
It would help, it would help a judge support the ordinance, basically.
Sure, absolutely. I, I mean, there are specific things that, you know, I, I, I've been listening, but there are specific things that, you know. That may we, I mean, for example, a local preference or a requirement, a local requirement may be legally tenuous. I can't, I'm not going to, I'm not going to opine, because I haven't seen any exact language or any draft language on this point. However, you know, and, and or, any part of the ordinance that, for example, discriminates against out-of-town businesses. Favouring in-town businesses is legally, I would say, you're on shaky ground there. So that's why, there are things that I think are, you know. There are findings that we can make that would cause a judge to, you know, would, would basically give it firmer grounding. Legally speaking, including that it's consistent with the general plan. And this is, you know, a business that's consistent with the zoning and so forth, stuff like that.
Yeah, I, I think, and the reason I was asking is I think that this supports the notion that it does need to go in for review. Since we're reviewing the general plan, so we're going to have verbiage from the general plan. It's going to be different from the current general plan. So therefore, this probably needs revision as well. I mean, you know, there's, there's, in the general plan, we have a vision that we're kind of outlining for the city of Ojai. Includes, you know, verbiage, like. You know, the community's unwavering support for small, locally-owned businesses, you know. So right in, right in the kind of vision of the general plan that we're thinking of, we have that balanced economy piece in there that, that talks about. You know, maintaining a viable tourist industry, celebrates Ojai's ecology and community character. You know, which is all part of that, kind of, you know, centers around that ordinance. You know what I mean? Like, that's, the ordinance is one of the tools we can use to help preserve Ojai's unique character, right?
Yeah, exactly. So, and, and the other point there is that, I guess, when we, when any revisions, the ordinance can then be. Harmonize what are the changes in the current, that will be made to the general plan. So I think, I mean, at this point, I would say that there's a lot of discussion and we're getting, sort of getting into specifics here. And, and so I would, I, you know, this is perhaps better suited for, you know, public hearing and an agendized item on specific revisions. And we're kind of moving beyond the discussion item point here. So. I would say that if there's any questions, I would, now would be the time. And then I think perhaps, and like I said, Steve, I think maybe if there's no, any additional questions of staff. I think Lucas seems, probably has clear direction on what the commission at this point is looking at. So maybe a motion is, is. A motion would be appropriate here.
I'm trying to strike that balance myself between having a motion and concluding this item. Versus giving Lucas all the feedback that we can about things that ought to be looked at or looked into. If, if the rest of the commission is satisfied that, that we've all at least hit some of our hot buttons. And, and can move on, then a motion would be appropriate. If you have something else that's really a big itch and you need to scratch it right now. In terms of this ordinance, let's, let's let Lucas know about it. And if not, then let's, let's have a motion.
Okay, well, I'll, oh, go ahead, Kathy. You, you had a lot of contribution on the discussion.
I know, go ahead.
Okay, well, I, yeah, I'll move that the commission direct staff to. Initiate reevaluation of the formula business ordinance. And taking into consideration the comments from planning commission, as well as the comments received from the public. And that we especially take a look at how to deal with our chain, our new economy. And how we can deal with formula businesses that applies to retail. The e-commerce and. Putting in, looking, looking at our current effort on the general plan in terms of adding in appropriate discussion. About our downtown and our, you know, the need to serve a balance of residents and visitors. And maintain our local. Our, our small-town business atmosphere. Or however we want to refine that. Let's see, we may. We want to look at both definitions, the numbers. The findings for a CUP. And possibly some exceptions, if that seems appropriate. I'm looking, anybody who wants to add wording to that. So that's my motion.
I was going to add the, make sure we schedule a public hearing.
And I think the essence of the motion is, we schedule a public hearing in the future as soon as staff can be ready. as soon as staff can be ready to discuss potential modifications to this formula business establishment ordinance.
Yeah. I even considered the thought, I mean, this is, this is a, um, it is actually a complicated issue. I think we're on the leading edge of kind of adre- addressing this, and I'm not sure how many examples we're going to find. We might find more information in the literature or, you know, uh, um, local government types of, uh, resource websites. Um, and that's fine to look there, too. Um, um.
But you, we have your motion. Is there a second?
Yes.
All second.
Very good. Uh, any discussion? I, I have one point, and I, I think it's, it, it has not been brought up directly in our discussion tonight. But whether we're talking about sales floor sales uh, from an individual parcel or structure, or we're talking about e-commerce sales, I think we keep coming back to the economies of scale of bigger businesses compared to smaller businesses. Um, I've been in both and I've enjoyed economies of scale when I worked for Rockwell and didn't particularly enjoy them when I was helping run a little electronics business in Cincinnati that didn't have the market power that Rockwell did. Um, but I'm, I guess I would say to Nikhil, is there a way to say the city as a matter of policy is opposed to one business having more market power than another business? I think that's what we're coming down to here.
Right. I, I think rather than s- s- phrasing it that way.
Well, I, I'm saying that's, that's the essence of the thought. Is there a way?
Yeah, I mean, I. Yes, you could, you could, for example, have an ordinance that has findings that says whereas the city wishes to promote competition and ensure an equitable playing field for something along those lines rather than a negative, um, like the inverse of that, I'm, I'm, what I, is what I'm saying. Um, you can ask, um, staff to come back with a, um, proposal to, uh, revise the formula business, uh, ordinance to address online businesses as well. And, uh, that probably is, uh, something that, um, it's a, it's a task for staff, but, uh, you know, that, that's something that they will have to, uh, uh, you know, that's some of.
Easy research to do.
Yes.
Yeah, and I, I just wanted to add on that. I mean, I think you gotta really define what's meant by, you know, online sales. I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of businesses that are purely online and that's all they do. So i- is there, is there a problem with that? Um, I, I don't know, um, but.
We have home businesses in this town right now.
All of them.
That are completely online sales.
Absolutely, absolutely. So would that qualify? I think we need to be real careful when we look at the online piece. So maybe it's online plus retail, uh, like physical retail location. Um, or maybe, I don't know what, I don't know what the balance is, but I think we just need to be careful when we just try to isolate online by itself. I think it needs to be looked at at a broader perspective. You know what I mean? Like, how are they actually doing business and how, how do we want to frame it up going forward as a community? Uh, because I think this was written in 2007. Um, online sales was not really a factor, you know, so.
I agree, Commissioner Trent.
Yeah, you just gotta be careful with that, I think.
Yeah, and I think, you know, at the beginning, I was, when I first brought that up, and I just said, well, it's a consideration. I don't know what the answer is yet. But, um, I, I, I think just some research has to go into it so we can kind of, you know, put our hands around it and kind of grasp it. And then maybe pick it apart from there. But, uh, but I do think it's pertinent and as did other, you know, members of the public brought it up as well. So we have our work cut out for us, but that's good.
We're, we're now discussing the motion. Does anyone else have other comments as to the motion itself? And I probably violated that rule already myself, and I apologize. Uh, no other, no other discussion coming up, then I'll call the question. Sherry, will you call the role on the motion to have staff come back at a, at a later meeting to schedule a public hearing on potential uh, modifications to this 10 to 17 13 formula businesses?
Chair Quilisi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nolan?
Yes.
Commissioner Lottis?
Yes.
Commissioners Trent?
Yes.
Commissioner Swift?
Very good.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Item four, future agenda items. Lucas, lead us through this, please.
I'm editing up some notes here.
Sure.
Um. All right.
You're in Charlie, but you're also the leader, so it's hard.
Gotta take them notes.
Yeah.
Um, so our next meeting is June 2nd, and we do have a public hearing item which is the addition to a second story. It's the DRP 21 dash 006 1124 North Signal Street. Uh, that application's complete, and we've already sent out notification to, to the paper on this. So this will be a public hearing item. Um, I want to put in a question mark for discussion as a discussion item. And deter, depending on what happens in the next 48 hours, there could very well be an additional item on the agenda, but I wanted to make the commission aware of that. And that is, um, the housing element, what relates sites, uh, as a discussion item. So, uh, we've already, I've already kind of worked that through with the consultant. It looks like, uh, we're going to have that just as a focused item for June 2nd. Um, that's a question mark currently. I noticed it's not on the discussion items for ten, in terms of what's being identified tonight, but that that was kind of, um, wrestled with, within the last 24 hours, actually. Um, and we've got some good feedback. I've been meeting with, uh, the community members that are interested in that. So it's been an ongoing, um, ongoing phone calls and, and, uh, informational pieces with the community. Uh, members who are interested in that. So just know that that potentially is going on for June 2nd. Uh, for the 16th, uh, the tree permit that was originally reviewed by the commissioner and continued for additional information. Um, I've been meeting back and forth with the applicant. It looks like they'll be ready to go on June 16th. There's a bit of a timing issue. Apparently they have their board meeting on the same night that we have our commission meeting. So, uh, scheduling it earlier than that, just, um, and talking with them doesn't seem seem plausible, but certainly a little bit further out. So we're looking at June 16th. Um, and that's a continued item. There is also a concept review at 302 South Montgomery. It's that corner of
Willow.
Willow, thank you. I think it was a W. Willow and Montgomery, um, southeast corner of that. And, um, it's kind of an interesting concept review. We'll see they're thinking they can get everything together for them to be on the June 16th meeting. And I, I have full confidence in them. So that's why it's on the agenda here tonight.
Okay, any questions for staff? Let's move on to item five then. And commission member reports. Anyone have anything interesting to report? I'll, I'll jump in very briefly. Uh, the Ojai Valley Municipal Area Council, the MAC met on Monday. They had two cases. One was a minor mod and request for continued use. A minor mod to a CUP for a wireless communications facility at Dennison Park. Um, and I don't know how many of you have driven by Dennison Park. Uh, it happens by chance that I did today. And there is a fairly large, uh, cell phone tower there. You have to look for it. It's well off the road. Um, but the, uh, the request was for some minor mods to that CUP and for continued use. And the O, uh, and the MAC recommends to the plant, the Ventura County Planning Commission to approve that. Second was a new CUP for a commercial retail uh, nursery in Casita Springs. And the MAC members made some changes to the request, but also recommended uh, to the planning, the county planning commission that that be approved. And that's the end of my report. And I submitted, I submitted results of the three meetings that we had since the last MAC meeting uh, to tell them that we'd looked at the housing element, we'd looked at vision and guiding principles and what was it? Oh, the, uh, second story modification on that house on, on Palomar. So. And anybody else who would like to do that with the MAC whenever they meet is welcome to do it. I tell Sherry, I'll, I'll give a report. They have a standard agenda item that is a report from the Ojai Planning Commission. And I'm willing to do it unless somebody else wants to. So if any of you get the urge, please do it. They're very nice people. They just like to know what's going on outside the, the area that they, uh, make recommendations on.
Thank you, thank you for, um, following up with them, Steve. That's great.
Uh, I know, I, I know Kathy Nolan has been to a bunch of MAC meetings in the past. Uh, there have been some, some very intense ones.
Yes.
When we got down to parking trailers on the street in Oakview.
RVs.
People were carrying pitchforks and torches. Um, okay, uh, anything else that needs to be covered? Oh, uh, any other, um, comments by our community development manager or our city attorney?
And for me?
And no comments tonight.
Very good. Then at 8:03 PM, I declare this meeting adjourned. I thank you all for your dedication again. Um, I've, I've not been on the commission as long as Kathy Nolan. Uh, and she knows members come and go. But this, this group of five inspires me with your dedication to go into detail on the cases that come before us. Um, and that's, it's heartwarming. It's the kind of thing that I think the city fathers, I'll use that archaic phrase, hope to get from, from planning commissioners, and I thank you all for it.